Right on Zoom?
Yes, we can hear you.
Right, right. Good evening. My name is Justin Lardwan. I'm the Chair of the Planning Commission. Apologize for the venue tonight. We usually meet in the City Council chambers, but this was a last-minute move due to scheduling issues. Open the Planning Commission meeting in order to turn off your cellphones. The parking validation machine, the garage under City Hall, is located on this table over here, little box with the blinking, not blinking, but the green light. Call me roll call during summary of hearing procedures where you have a public may provide comment during today's session. We'll start with the roll call. It's Justin Lardwan, the Chair. I'm here. Vice Chair Nellis Wise?
Here.
Commissioner Barocio is not here. Commissioner Bigford?
Here.
Commissioner Cantrell is not here. Norris Commissioner Casey. Commissioner Garcia?
Here.
Commissioner Oliverio is not here. Commissioner Rosario told me he'll be absent. Commissioner Torriot? And Commissioner Young?
Here.
Okay, so that's, we have quorum. Right, summary of hearing procedures. Do we have speaker cards in here tonight?
Yeah, sure.
Okay. All right, folks want to fill them out so we can speak or order, that'd be great. Not required given the situation. And anyways, read through here. If you want to address the commission, please fill out a speaker card located on table in the back near the parking validation machine. And give me your completed card. The procedure for this hearing is as follows. After staff's presentation, applicants and or repellents may make up to a five-minute presentation. During the public comment period, the Chair will call out names on submitted speaker cards and the order received for those members of the public who attended in person. As your name is called, line up in front of the microphone at the front of the chamber. Members of the public who attend by teleconference to meeting technician will connect those persons who desire to speak to the commissions that may be heard. Generally, each speaker will be given up to two minutes for public testimony and speakers using a translator will have up to four minutes. At discretion of the Chair, the time allotted to each speaker may be changed depending on the number of items on the agenda, number of speakers and other factors. Speakers using a translator will have double the time allotted. After the public testimony, the applicant and/or appellant may make closing remarks for up to an additional five minutes. Planning Commissioners may ask questions of the speakers and response to Commissioner questions will not reduce the speaker's time allowance. Public hearing will then be closed and the Planning Commission will take action on the item. The Planning Commission may request staff to respond to the public testimony, ask staff questions and discuss the item. If you challenge these land use decisions in court, you may be limited to raising only those issues you or someone else raised at this public hearing or written correspondence to the City out of private public hearing. Planning Commission's action on rezonings, pre-zonings, the general plan amendments and code amendments will be advisory to the City Council. City Council will hold public hearings on these items. Section 20.120.400 municipal code provides the procedures for legal protest to City Council on rezonings and pre-zonings. Planning Commission's action on conditional use permits is appealable to City Council in accordance with section 20.100.220 municipal code. Agendas and all staff reports to this meeting may be accessed at the City's website. And I just want to note that Commissioner Cantrell and Commissioner Barocio have joined us. All right, so we'll continue to call of order, or sorry, call the order and orders of the day. Before we begin, I want to remind the Planning Commission members and members of the public to follow our code conduct of meetings. This includes commenting on a specific agenda item only and addressing the full body. Speakers will not engage in conversation with commissioners or staff. All members of the Planning Commission, staff and the public are expected to refrain from abusive language. Repeated failure to comply with code of conduct will disturb, disrupt or impede the orderly conduct of this meeting. They result in removal from the meeting. Meeting of the Planning Commission will now come to an end. All right. So we'll now continue to public comment. And this is the time for public comments of the Planning Commission on non-agendized items. So everyone, folks here for the Olin Hotel projects. I'll be later in the meeting. This is just for items not on tonight's agenda. Remember, so the public who attended in person, as I said earlier, please fill out a speaker's card. For members of the public who join by teleconference, please use the raise hand feature on Zoom or press star nine on your phone to raise a hand to speak. Each member of the public may address the commission for up to two minutes. The commission cannot take any formal action without the item being properly noticed and placed on the agenda. Response to public comment, the Planning Commission is limited to the following options. Responding to statements made or questions posed by members of the public or requesting staff to report back on that on a subsequent meeting or directing staff to place the item on a future agenda. We have anyone here in person or over Zoom to give public comment on an item not on tonight's agenda?
Hello Chair, we have no hands raised on the Zoom site.
Okay, great. So we will move on. Next on the agenda is deferrals and or moves from calendar staff. Do we have any items that are being deferred or removed tonight?
No.
Okay, we'll continue on. So we will go to the consent calendar. Oh, yeah. Sure, so, thank you, Daniel. Yeah, all right, so before we move further in the meeting, we'll take this time to disclose and ex parte communication. This is, if any members of the commission have had communications with, about items on tonight's agenda outside of a public hearing, this will be the time to disclose. I'll disclose myself that I met with the applicant, Mark Thiercini, as well as Christine Greco from the neighborhood. Any other commissioners? Commissioner Pius?
Hi, also.
Any other disclosures? Okay. Thank you. So now we'll continue to the consent calendar and tonight's consent calendar is just our minutes from the November 15th meeting. Do we have any amendments, amendments or motion to approve?
Motion to approve?
All right, there's a motion from Vice Chair Nellis Wise to approve the minutes from the November 15th meeting. Do we have second? Second. Second for Commissioner Young. There's no further discussion. We'll go to the vote. Vice Chair Nellis Wise?
Yes.
Commissioner Barocio?
Yes.
Commissioner Bigford?
Yes.
Commissioner Cantrell? Okay, Commissioner Casey is not present. Commissioner Garcia? Yes. Commissioner Oliverio not present. Commissioner Rosario is not either. Commissioner Torriot? Yes. Commissioner Young? Yes. Myself, yes. So that's seven yes, zero no and one abstention that passes. For everyone's information, you do not need to present. You just need to vote on the minutes, but it's actually. All right, so we'll move on. Next on the agenda is public hearing and we have no items for public hearing tonight. Olin Hotel project is later on the agenda. We'll continue, item six is continuing the general plan public hearing from November 15th, 2023 for 2023 cycle four. We go to the consent calendar for the general plan, no items. So we will move on to the general plan public hearing. This, we have one item for tonight. This is GPT 23-001 and ER 23-031, which is privately initiated general plan text amendment. As well as, especially? No, okay, thank you. Relating to the proposed hotel project at 425 South Winchester Boulevard. So the procedure here, I'll just remind everyone, is we'll have a presentation from staff and the applicant will have five minutes to speak. Then we'll take public comment. Each person will have two minutes and then we'll have an additional five minutes from the applicant and then we'll go to the commission for discussion and deliberation. So we'll hand over to staff for the presentation.
Good evening, Chair, Vice Chair and Commissioners. My name is Rena Hordia and I am the Project Manager for item number 88 on the agenda today. With me today is Court Peaches. Thank you. Court Peaches, planner with the Sequoia Team, we're Portville Principal Planner and Laura Miners, Planner for overseeing the review of the associated special use permit with this on Zoom.
Can you just speak a little louder? It's quite quiet over here and I just want to make sure it comes through on the microphone.
Please speak louder.
Thank you.
Yes, so this special use permit is still under review and not a part of the commission's actions tonight. If City Council approves staff recommendation, then the special use permit would be heard at a director's hearing. Staff is recommending that planning commission recommend that the City Council take all of the following actions. Adopt a resolution to approve that initial study mitigated negative declaration for the 425 South Winchester Boulevard project for which an initial study was prepared, all in accordance to Sequoia as amended. And adopt a resolution to approve a general plan text amendment to modify the Santana Row Valley Fair Urban Village Plan Figure 5-2 building height diagram from 65 feet to 85 feet on an approximately 0.55 acre site located at 425 South Winchester Boulevard. And to modify the Santana Row Valley Fair Urban Village Plan Figure 5-3 setback from 40 feet to 20 feet and the stepback or daylight plane from 45 degrees to 55 degrees for new development when adjacent to residential and urban residential land use designations. And to modify Figure 5-3 to no setback and no setback plane required for new commercial development when adjacent to sites that have a residential neighborhood land use designation with an existing legally established commercial use. The project site 425 South Winchester Boulevard is located at the northwest corner of the intersection of South Winchester Boulevard and Olin Avenue. The 425 South Winchester Boulevard site, which is the approximately 0.55 acre site, currently has a vacant gas station and auto repair business that operates on a month and left basis. The subject site is within the Santana Row Valley Fair Urban Village Plan area. The applicant is proposing the general plan text amendments to facilitate their special use permit file number SP 23-005 to demolish the site and construct a seven-story hotel. Surrounding uses of the subject site include retail, commercial and restaurants to the north, an office building Santana West and the Winchester Mystery House to the south, Santana Row to the east and single-family residential to the west. Here is a land use map of the Santana Row Valley Fair Urban Village Plan area for context. The site 425 South Winchester Boulevard is where the blue arrow is pointing to. The site has a mixed-use commercial land use designation and as you can see, this site requires ground for commercial and the letter P with a circle means the plan envisions a floating park or plaza. The applicant is aware of this but has not proposed any park or plazas at the site at this time. A park or plaza at the site is a want but not a requirement in the urban village plan. The Figure 5-2 building height diagram, which has been cropped and zoomed in for ease of viewing, shows the subject site 425 South Winchester Boulevard highlighted in yellow outline as the site that would go from 65 feet to 85 feet maximum building height. Staff has identified 85 feet as an appropriate transition between the surrounding building heights, which ranges from 35 feet to 150 feet. The current standards for new development adjacent to residential land use designations is a 40-foot side rear setback and a 45-degree stepback or daylight plane. The applicant initially came to us with a proposal for a 20-foot side rear setback and 75-degree daylight plane, which is why we have the 75-degree plane in the image here. But after receiving public comment and deliberating alternatives, staff believes a 20-foot side rear setback and a 55-degree daylight plane is an appropriate modification. If the text amendments are approved by City Council, any new development adjacent to residential and urban residential land use designations would be required to have a 20-foot setback and a 55-degree daylight plane. In addition, the applicant withdrew the initial request for a general plan land use designation change and associated conforming rezoning for an adjacent parcel located at 390 Spar Avenue. Instead, the applicant is requesting a new text amendment, which states, "No setback and no stepback plane are required for new commercial development adjacent to sites that have a residential neighborhood land use designation with an existing legally established commercial use." 390 Spar Avenue is the only site that currently has a residential.
Since you're talking about 390 Spar, would you speak this a little louder, please?
Oh, okay, no problem. Yeah, so let me go ahead and repeat. So 390 Spar Avenue is the only site that currently has a residential neighborhood land use designation and an existing legally established commercial use. Staff held two virtual community meetings and attended one in-person meeting hosted by the neighborhood. During these meetings, common reoccurring themes of concerns included the proposed hotel itself, traffic impacts, daylight and shadows from the proposed hotel, changes to the urban village plan, the setback and the stepback for daylight plane. The Planning Commission staff report includes staff's responses to these issues. In summary, traffic impacts and hotel operations can be addressed through the special use permit process. As for the issues related to setback and stepback daylight plane, staff believes the setback is an appropriate change given the existing setback on the site and that the reduced setback would support intensification of the site pursuant to the goals of the general plan and the urban village plan. The change of the daylight plane from the initial 75 degrees, which is a citywide design standard to 55 degrees is an acceptable compromise to allow some flexibility while still providing stepbacks for single-family properties. An initial study mitigated negative declaration has been prepared for the project and is included as part of the general plan text amendment as well as the special use permit. The general plan text amendments, should they be approved by City Council, will facilitate the demolition of the site 425 South Winchester Boulevard for the construction of an approximately 90,797 square foot, 176-room hotel. The initial study mitigated negative declaration concludes that the project would not result in any significant impacts with a mitigation plan. Therefore, staff recommends that the planning commission find the project is in conformance with the California Environmental Quality Act and recommend planning commission to recommend that the City Council approve of the general plan text amendments. This concludes staff's presentation.
Thank you Rena. Before we move on, just one want to note that Commissioner Oliverio has joined us and then also asked for warning of the silence their phones. Okay, so now that we've concluded the staff presentation, we'll move on to five minutes from the applicant.
Yes, Daniel, you're okay, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, just make sure you project so the microphone picks you up and it's almost starting to sound.
Great, thank you very much and thank you, Mr. Chair and members of the Planning Commission. It's a pleasure to be here this evening. First of all, I want to thank staff for a very clear analysis and report. Sometimes we have difference of opinion on how the staff report comes out and I'm very pleased with the clarity and the detail of my name to this particular staff report. As was mentioned, before I, before I go, I want to mention that I have all the members of my design team here at the seat, both in the room and on Zoom. They include Lottie Architects, AGMH Civil Engineering, Kimberly Horn Environmental and Traffic Engineers and Jesse Lexton with the Principal of Sightline Hospitality. And I want to encourage the planning commissioners, commissioners to ask any questions of any member of the team or figure to address those comments. I'd like to keep my very brief at the opening here to just address what was pointed out by staff, what we've heard from some of the members of the community. And I'm going to start off with the first one and that is the the comment about impacting traffic on Spar Avenue. It's want to be very clear that we designed the project specifically to have our cars turn in the drive lane left onto Olin Avenue to a signalized intersection. And that signalized intersection allows those cars leaving the hotel to either go southbound on Winchester Boulevard or northbound on Winchester Boulevard. So there is a need for them to traverse along Spar Avenue. And we've included a, with the, with the help of local works and continue to have dialogue of works on this, signage that will be installed at the driving exit that will state to the hotel guests let turn only. And that we believe will be adequate to indicate which way is the proper way to exit out onto Olin Avenue and get out of the neighborhood. The second comment that is prevalent here is the shade or shadow adjoining property owners. And there is a shadow study that was done and I'm going to have jump some with Lottie Architects who didn't address that. But in addition to the shadow studies, on the screen, you'll see, at one slide, Jennifer, on the screen, I've outlined, I've had the architects outline, in the dotted line is the approved five-story mixed-use project that I have to date. And the other line there, the, this solid line is the outline of the proposed hotel. And I wanted to show this because we took shots and Jennifer, you can point down to the first red dot there. We flew drone shots and now you can go to the next slide, from that particular vantage point at 37 feet and then up to 80 feet in, in height. And I wanted to do this because I wanted to demonstrate that, yes, at 37 feet, you'll be able to see on that left slide there is the office building owned by Phyllis Weber and then to the next slide over there, the blue home that you see is also owned by Phyllis Weber but is occupied by her daughter that is here this evening. And then the next slide over is the third property corridor, which is hard to see with, with the tree there. And when you go to the higher height limit of 80 feet, obviously we're starting to look over the top of these homes and not necessarily looking in, I think, to, to rear yards. Jennifer, you can go to the next slide please. The next point that was taken, you can point that out, is right in this location here and I thought that was sort of a key location of showing it up exactly the outline of the approved mixed-use project. If you can go back up, Jennifer. Again, taking shots and it really, and I, I want to pause for a moment. I've, I've looked at these quite often and there are a few locations where one can see a blue home in a, in a rear yard. There are other locations where the, the existing tree that's planted there, there's no visibility whatsoever into, into the rear yard. And again, when you get higher up, it makes it even more challenging to look down and see vistas into the rear yard. Privacy is a, a key and we've, we've designed the project with an eight-foot-high wall.
Includes your time.
Isn't it? That was five minutes.
It was. You'll have an additional five minutes after public comment.
Thank you.
All right, so we will move on to public comment on this item. I see all the stacks, speaking cards right here. I'll take those. Okay, so we'll take Daphne Wolf first. You have two minutes right ahead.
Thank you, sorry. I'm, I'm supposed to be in that meeting right now, so I just ran down here. So hello Commissioners, my name is Daphne Wolf. I am President of the Winchester Orchard Neighborhood Association, referred to as Bona from here on out. We're bordered by Stevens Creek and 280 as well as Santa Moss and Winchester Boulevard across from Santana Row. We are an older established neighborhood with a rich history that is now surrounded by city-designated urban villages, which of course means multi-story infill development. Our neighbors, including myself, are prominent members of Stevens Creek Urban Village Planning Committee as well as the Winchester Boulevard Urban Village Planning Committee. During the 18 months of meetings, neighbors, developers and the planning department dug deeply into the integration of the urban villages with the established neighborhood. Even though we asked for lower heights in the urban villages, these were consistently raised as the months went on. Eventually, the entire committee asked for shadow studies for the entire corridor as well as site plans, setbacks and height proposals. These were provided and studied by the task force. The final recommendations and guidelines came from 18 diligent months of work. To simply ignore the work of the planning department and these task forces sends a clear message to the citizenry, don't volunteer as you work and voices will not be honored. The urban village plans were made as a roadmap for the future. They have been followed by other developers. The future is now and the plans are relevant. The neighbors sacrificed much as the plans were set forth. We are not a nimbie neighborhood as everything is in our backyards. Our vision statement for our neighborhood is as follows, plan for tomorrow while preserving the integrity of our neighborhood today. This matches the urban village and 2040 general plan guidelines, which seeks to integrate new developments while not severely compromising existing neighborhoods. You'll hear from neighbors tonight about the Olin Hotel proposal. They will talk about heights, setbacks, solar panels and more. There are precedents all along Winchester Boulevard as new developments have followed the urban village plans.
Yeah, and that concludes your time.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, and thank you for taking the time to join us when you've got your own meeting going on. All right, we will go ahead to the cards I have here. Dave Duquette, I'll see your name correctly. Right here. Sorry, did I get that wrong?
No, you pressed right.
Okay.
This project has wreaked a deception and coercion right from the very start. I was the first notice for a community meeting for this project printed on the wrong, the wrong date and then sent out to everybody. and then sent out to everybody? Why was the needed support from property of 390 Spar Avenue all of a sudden pulled at the very end? The general plan amendment will affect the entire urban village. Why hasn't the entire urban village been and surrounding neighbors been notified of this? Since this affects the entire urban village, why was this pushed through with only a mitigated environmental impact report? If this, if the entire urban village and neighboring residents were notified of what was actually taking place tonight, there'd be a lot more folks here, and we would not all be able to fit in this room. With only two minutes, I don't have enough time to go over how egregiously deceptive the traffic analysis report was for this project. However, I will say that everyone, ask anyone in this room, if you were to say what, when the traffic might be an issue for this project, given that it is directly across from Santana Row and Valley Fair, I would bet no one would pick Wednesday, February fifteenth, or Thursday, March third, the middle of the week, on the slowest time of year. These were the only two days that were analyzed when they did the, when they did the report. And then they had the nerve to say that the traffic calming measures have been a great success. This would all be quite amusing if I wasn't so disgusted and offended by this whole process. The urban village plan took years of community engagement to complete. I personally was at those PAC meetings, and at the end of the day, it was not perfect, but I think the city could be proud of what actually took place. Now, I can't believe that we're going to throw this all away because one greedy developer wanted to do things on the cheap and put ten pounds of crap in a five-pound bag. It's that simple. There are more than enough potential sites that are large enough to accommodate a hotel of this size that will fall within the guidelines of the city for the urban village plan.
Another card from A. Scott.
Hello, members of the planning commission. As a resident of Spar Avenue, I live west of the Santana Row Valley Fair Urban Village Plan and across the street from the site of the proposed hotel. We all welcome new development. I have many concerns with today's agenda items. Honestly, too many to cover in my allotted two minutes, so I'm going to raise just the three that I'm most passionate about. My first concern is the acoustics analysis. In the recreational activities section, there's too much estimation and very little detail on the proposed patio and pool. And where is the acoustical analysis of the open-air restaurant? There is absolutely nothing in there. Spar already receives a good amount of noise originating from Santana Row Park and traveling through the corridor, which is created by the sheer buildings along Olend. Noise levels in excess of a hundred decibels are not uncommon in restaurants. And this restaurant's windows will open up both to Winchester and Olend, and the sound's going to ride that same corridor into our neighborhood. My second concern is with the local transportation analysis. The developer is well aware that the forty-five onsite vehicle parking spaces for the one hundred seventy-six-room hotel is inadequate, so it's currently looking for on, off-site parking. Looking without tangible parking, this development plan and analysis is merely theoretical and incomplete. My final concern is with the transparency of this amendment. After walking and polling the neighborhoods, I estimate generously that the city only sent out fifty postcards, and all were sent to the residents either zero, one, or maybe two streets, one, two, or streets west of the site. But the amendment is for the entire urban village plan, a plan spanning about eighty-five acres. I looked at a map. I counted about one hundred ninety-eight residents that have a fence line either inside the plan or directly adjacent to the planned area.
Scott, that concludes your time. Thank you.
And only fifteen have been notified out of those one ninety-eight. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. And just to be clear, I was laughing because Commissioner Oliverio was saying that he got spooked by the alarm going off, not because he wasn't laughing.
This is the best time you've ever had.
All right, card for Jane Lucero-Wolff, please, the neighbor.
It's me, thank you. The planning staff has demonstrated no concern for Spar Avenue and its residents. By broadly recommending that the city council approve all submitted general plan amendments by one developer without taking into account any of the concerns of the impacted residents, this planning commission is going to be blatantly tossing aside all of the collaborative work, as mentioned by Daphna, that we've put into the Santana Row Urban Village Plans that were approved in 2017. Though I oppose all of the proposed amendment, I am specifically concerned with the following. Given that signs on private property are not enforceable by law, this statement alone demonstrates that members of this commission or the planning staff, excuse me, have not seriously given any consideration to the residents of Spar. To think that hotel patrons will only turn left onto Olend is not only naive, it is laughable. Any person driving a car who needs to go to Stevens Creek will not wait for a light at Olend and Winchester, especially if they have already waited for their car to be delivered to them from an off-site location. Secondly, I disagree that a mixed-use residential project is infeasible within the framework of the Santana Row Urban Village. The developer, Mark Tercini, was well aware of the building requirements or guidelines when they were, when the property was purchased in 2020. While I agree that a hotel will increase the number of jobs in San Jose, I highly doubt that residents within the urban village will be among those hired. Furthermore, there is no added value to residents in terms of walkability and amenities. We are not going to take advantage of any of the rooms. We will not be allowed to use open spaces for our own benefit, aside from perhaps dining on the first floor. Rather, we will be fighting traffic from visitors who are not from the urban village. Hotel patrons are not residents. Thank you.
Next card, sorry, I'm struggling with the handwriting, but it's Rosa.
My name is Rosa. I purchased the 350 Spar on September 31st. I am very close to the hotel project, probably about three houses. I wanted to be the part of Santana Row, so bought this house. I had to give myself exhaustedly on the city and planning guidelines, guidelines before the purchase. I'm not finding out that the city's throwing away all the studies, community guidelines, and promises down the drain for a profit. I have since then invested fifteen thousand dirt, per irrigation plants, trees, and greenhouses. I'm also in discussion on solar conversion to save on energy costs. Zero to no regard to established community guidelines, City and Olend Avenue LLC, I know. Teaming up to deprive me from privacy in my own vault, forcing me to take on over four hundred thousand energy costs in the next thirty years, and forcing dependence on PG&E, and also eliminating any possibilities of vegetable garden on my property. City secured the maximum property tax amount from my purchase by using the sale price during the highest inflation period. I was clearly misled with the false urban city guidelines publication at the time. City and Olend Avenue LLC are not partaking in direct measures to deprive me from my opportunities to reduce my energy costs, but instead are okay with reducing my property value without any forced reduction to my property taxes. Either the city failed to educate the developer on the planning guidelines or the developer is trying to make a mockery of the uncountable they've put into safeguarding the community values, environmental riches. Either way, this is a colossal waste of time and taxpayers' money. I demand to be compensated for the lost solar opportunity, demand for my property taxes to be reduced, and demand the city and Olend Avenue LLC team to provide a community garden. Thank you.
Thank you. My next card is for Bill Schiper. Schaper, I got it.
All right. My name is Bill Schaper. I've been a resident on Hanson Avenue for the last twenty-five-plus years. This is the next three over for Spar. First, I want to make sure, make a clear, far from anti-development. When we brought our house back in ninety-seven, Santana Row wasn't even around as a town and country, open-air mall. Since then, both of my daughters have been employed there. One still is today. So, you know, we very much appreciate, you know, the development that's occurred around the area, the architecture, the safety that happens when you have all this investment coming in the area, and the developers really want to protect that investment. So that's all appreciated. So, not anti-development. However, with regards to Olend Hotel development, I have serious concerns. It's an attractive design, sure. Replaces gas stations that have been out of use for some time. It's adjacent to an empty piano store. You know, you've got Khan's Restaurant, which is fenced up, covered in graffiti, and progressively being vandalized. So the whole area is sort of like conspiring to coerce us into, you know, appreciating any kind of development that could improve that strip. But, you know, this isn't going to be the one. Unfortunately, the hotel, Olend Hotel is currently proposed as a potential to create many more problems beyond its current property boundaries, not the least of which is the precedent would set for other adjacent developments. And beyond that, will seek to break every rule in the interest of making their project work. I haven't spoke to anyone in our neighborhood that actually opposes a hotel, per se. What we are uniformly and formally opposed to is the fact that the developer has seemingly gone out of its way to break or bend every rule that were painstakingly crafted by the residents over the better part of two years. And the modification of the general plan that the applicant seeks with respect to sharpen setbacks, steeper site plans, and increased overall height are all supposedly in the interest of making the project work. Consider perhaps that this project doesn't in fact work. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Bill. Next, I have Christian Greco.
Commissioners, I'm Christian Greco, Vice President of Winchester Orchard Neighborhood Association. In the strongest of ways, our neighborhood urges a no vote to these general plan text amendments. These amendments are contrary to the neighborhood protections suggested in and required by the general plan and the Santana Row Valley Fair Urban Village Plan. As these changes have potential to negatively impact not only Spar properties, but all properties within the bordering, within and bordering the urban village, it should be questioned whether legal and proper notification has been given to all potentially impacted properties. We believe not. When properties not on Spar are negatively impacted, those residents will ask how this happened, what was the process, and who's responsible. For this project on that site, the requested changes exceed current maximums that any other developer would be required to adhere. The same should be required of this development. The latest requested change to no setback and no step-back plane required for new commercial development adjacent to sites that have residential neighborhood land use designations with existing legally established commercial use is highly egregious. It would strip residents in that land use designation of the right to any legally established commercial use without the threat of an eighty-five-foot building straight up on their property line. This is completely unacceptable. All we ask is that this development play by the existing rules. Very simple. This change would set the precedent that would be the new standard in our urban village first and all others thereafter, as it would be extremely hard for this commission and city council to say no to others after saying yes here and now. Please vote no. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. My next card is for Phyllis Weber.
I'm the owner of 390 Spar and also 382 Spar, so I'm hoping I can have four minutes.
Just two.
I'll take the S. My building was purchased in nineteen eighty-three and was owned as a beauty shop. I applied for commercial, and that was branded. And at the time, I paid thirty-three hundred dollars for the fees to get that zoning fee. Been occupied many years as Weber Insurance plus professional tenants. Now I have professional tenants. Now the city has arbitrarily rezoned me to residential and make me feel better. I'm grandfathered in, along with professional buildings all along the east of, going east on Olend. Mark Tercini had planned a hotel project which requires allowing an approximately twenty-two-foot height change, zoning change. He could not proceed without my approval. He approached me and my girls, saying that in exchange he would apply for a zoning change at 390 Spar to allow to up to three multifamily units in order to go forward. I signed intent, but didn't go forward. The secretary said she would take care of the details. Unbeknownst to me, Tercini paid seventeen thousand five hundred dollars in fees. I naively thought it was a thousand dollars, and considering what I paid years ago, I should have known better. However, after much consideration, I decided a change of zoning with height limit of all those currently allowed was not good, as it would impact 390 Spar, 382 Spar owned by me, and potentially impact all properties going north to Winchester due to shadows produced in backyards of the residences. Again, I had not signed for a zoning change and rescinded anything related to a zoning change of 390 Spar. Requests regarding potential zoning change were removed, and fees returned to Mr. Tercini as far as I know.
That's the conclusion of your time.
Excusez-moi.
You have two minutes to speak, and it's been two minutes.
I need another two because I have another problem.
It's two minutes per person.
Well, you missed the best part.
All right. I have a card for Pete Smith, but are you here on behalf of the developer?
Yes, on behalf.
Okay, right, so that'll be part of the five minutes at the beginning and the end. So these cards are just for the public.
Are you, is he from the community or you work for? I work for the, I just wanted to share a chance to respond to questions.
Sure, yeah, and so if we ask you questions, you can answer them.
Previously, I have not been able to answer.
Gotcha, okay, well.
Just trying to be careful.
Sure, okay. All right, so I have another card for Kim Lee. Is that what it says?
Yeah. So I have, pretty much kind of your state, but most of the tenants here, we, most of the tenants, residents in their first, second generation, very new, resident area. I just see the trends of just how things just kind of move a certain way, and it doesn't really benefit the neighborhood. I, for a reason, I picked this neighborhood because I was able to, want to raise my kids in a quiet neighborhood. I didn't expect the neighborhood to change. You know, fingers for Wona, they stopped the encroachment into our neighborhood when Ray Truss took over the Peters. You know, without Wona, we would have, they would have just kept coming and coming. This project, I think the last meeting we had at Daphna's house, the shadow study shows that there's going to be, it's going to touch on my, I spent a lot of money on a solar roof, you know, trying to help the environment, and now it's going to be affected directly. It shows that study, and I'm quite happy, you know. We're also trying to have privacy for our kids, make sure that other developers won't develop the same way. If you allow this to happen, I'm very sure the next one that's right behind me, which was the old Khan's store or the old Khan's. Yeah. It's going to do the same thing, and I'm just afraid that it's going to continue. And all of us will have points on that. And Spar will be affected. And I think that's not, that's, we chose to stay with it. I'll be one of the ten, and we don't want, we don't want the neighborhood to change.
Thank you, Ken. All right, so that concludes the cards I have. Is there anyone in the room tonight who would like to have a public comment? Who didn't put a card in? Yeah, sure, if you could just state your name and then go ahead.
Yes, I'm Christian Carlyle. I live next to 390 Spar at 382 Spar. I have lived in my house since nineteen eighty-eight, and I've lived there, and I stay there because it's quiet and safe, and I have a wonderful garden that I don't have to, that's completely in sun. Now, with the new building that's gone into the right, and the new one's going to, it's projected to go in, I have forty-five minutes of sun in the day. The whole neighborhood temperature has changed to windy and cold. It's changed the whole environmental impact of the whole neighborhood, and it makes people not want to be there. So, people are selling right and left. You might look, I know it's not just prices, but people want to leave because of things that are happening to the neighborhood.
Does that conclude your comments?
Yes.
Anyone else? Okay, do we have anyone on Zoom for public comment?
Hey Chair, yes, we have one speaker with their hand raised. Greg Chastey, if you can go ahead and unmute your device and state your comment, you have two minutes.
Okay. Oh, sorry. Oh, sorry, um.
If you touch this, you'll see the volume. Settings, there you go.
Oh, yeah, alright, yeah, we just turned up the volume in the room. Go ahead now.
Okay, great, um, so I just want to say I'm, I'm also a resident. I live nearby. I live in the new Polte development. I'm also the youngest in the room, so to speak, I'm not in the room. I just want to say I'm strongly in favor of this. I have family that would want to stay in this hotel. I think it's, like, there's a lot of hypocrisy here because literally right across the street is a building that I'm pretty sure is over a hundred feet, right? Santana West is very tall and it's right next door. And then I also want to say for the developer, for the proposed lounge, please consider not having it be indoor/outdoor because the road noise from Winchester is terrible and I would never go there if I could hear it from your lounge. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Greg. Is there anyone else who's on Zoom or is that it?
Yes, we have another speaker, Jeffrey Z. Motor, Z. Tomer. I'm sorry about that. Go ahead and unmute your device and begin to speak.
Hi, can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, I'm Jeff Zitomer. I've been living on Hanson Avenue, so one street over from SPAR for ten years with a wife and eight-year-old daughter. I'm mostly here to join the concerns of my neighbors from SPAR. Sort of, yeah, a hotel in the area would be very nice. I kind of agree with the less person, but as far as height, shadows, traffic, just sort of throwing by the wayside, all the research that was already put in, all the communication with the neighbors, and just kind of deciding with, I don't know, at least here it wasn't communicated, what was behind all the times that it was like, okay, staff thinks this is reasonable or whatever the specific term was, that's just kind of troubling, troubling also to think about all the rest of the development up to the north of that on Winchester where there wouldn't be a tree in the way blocking privacy. Or also when just a permit is submitted to remove that tree and then it just gets removed and then it won't be there any longer. And just, I guess, a comment on the Santana West. I can't really take credit for this, haven't been as involved with the neighborhood, but I know that the neighbors worked very closely on all the planning related to that as well. I was only in a couple of meetings and that was a pretty big trauma for all the neighbors. So saying that it's hypocrisy because there's a taller building is kind of silly. That taller building wasn't there a few years ago and many of the same people here who spoke on behalf of the neighbors were involved in all of that and made a lot of concessions to allow that to happen. I'm still waiting for the park for my eight-year-old daughter. I was promised that when she was three. Because I believe when that meeting was that I was at and it was talked about some park being in some phase two of that Polte project in exchange for all of the changes coming, still waiting for that park, so. Like, I think we need to see a little bit more to, to believe in. We need to be given a little more credit. Or really, my neighbors and the, and the neighborhood committee need to be given a lot more credit because they've been on top of this all along. I'm just really here to support them and sort of feel sorry for not being here sooner.
Thank you. Does that conclude Zoom public comment?
But next we have Matt Brandy. Matt, go ahead.
Hi, yes, I'm Matt Brading. I've lived in three five zero SPAR since ninety-one, born and raised in this house and seen all the changes throughout the years and with the new proposed development, I'm worried a lot about the traffic. We're getting a lot of people cutting through on SPAR Avenue. Also worried about the privacy. I mean, with the aerial views, they can see right into my backyard, so I'm worried about that. And also just the noise of more traffic, more people around. We have a lot of people loitering in the area already and people parking on our street and loitering and for the gentleman who was concerned about the hotel, you know, we're already, there's already hotel in Hotel Valencia and Santana Row. Couple of the hotels nearby, so I don't think another hotel is needed in this area right now or ever. I'm, we're, so we're against this proposed hotel development right now. Thank you.
Thank you.
This concludes all of the hands raised on our side, on the Zoom side. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Can we pass these cards down to Michael Brio? Okay, so then that concludes public comment on this item. We will move on to initial five minutes for the applicant.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and members of the commission. I sent a letter to all of you and I wanted to outline that upon the property initially, I went through the process with the same design team with the exception of the architectural team for a mixed-use residential project. It was done, it was done at the same time I was working with block construction for pricing route. And a lot of things have changed and since the time that I purchased property to now, both construction costs and more importantly, interest rates have moved substantially. Making the project infeasible to build and I don't see a future for the project to be built, even if the interest rates were to decline, I believe they will, but the construction costs were substantially higher than what we could afford to spend and actually attract the capital. So I want to be really cautious of my time because I do want Jung to be able, again, demonstrate the shadow study. But brought in lowly architects to completely redesign the project. So I have approved project, I'm moving that aside, redesigned the project to an L-shaped, R-shaped building, folded as close as we could to Winchester Boulevard and Olin and provide great setbacks to the adjoining property owners of both Kristen and Phyllis. There's going to be.
There's smaller. Not a debate.
Yeah, got it, not a debate, right. And so I'm going to let Jung get the shadow study, so I have this opportunity, but I may be already answering questions of the commission.
So, just want to explain the shadow study that we have here. The first thing to note is the blue shadows versus the gray shadows over there. And what that shows is the difference between a sixty-five foot tall building and eighty-five foot tall building. So we're talking incremental increase in the shadows, just keep that in mind. So we're looking at June, March, September and December. Obviously, the December is the worst case scenario because the sun is at its lowest. When you're looking at June, you can see that none of the shadows affect any of the residential, the top two buildings there at all from nine AM to four PM. There is no effect on the shadows. When you go to March and September, nine AM, you can see a little bit of encroachment on that middle residential right there. And then by nine thirty AM, there is no shadow effect on the residential, March and September. When you look at December, you can see that nine AM, you're going to get effect, you are going to have some effect on those two residential at the very top. But by eleven AM, you're not going to have any effect of the shadows. That red dotted line on the December timeline there shows the extent of the existing shadow from the office building. So that is already encroaching into the residential building right there already. But that basically gives you a good idea of how it affects during the times of the year. Again, summer months, there's no effect. March and June, in March and September, we're talking at nine thirty AM and beyond, you're going to be out of the shadows. And on December, the worst case scenario, by eleven AM, you'll be out of the shadows.
You have another minute and a half. Is there anything else you'd like to say?
No, I'll just make myself available for any questions on the civil engineer or the traffic engineer that's available via Zoom.
Thank you. So that concludes the applicant's presentation and before we get to commissioner discussion, I just want to clarify something with our attorney. So we have nine commissioners and attendants tonight, so majority of us will be five, but because this is a general plan item, we need the majority of the body, which would be six. We need six votes to make any decision tonight. Okay, so given we don't have any electronics keeping track of the speaker order, just, you want to speak, just give my attention and I'll, I'll keep track and I'll call on you. Commissioner Bigford first.
For clarification of, when you said any decision, that that decision is a recommendation to city council?
Exactly, oh yes, yeah, on this item, we are purely advisory.
Just wanted, thank you.
Commissioner Alberio?
Professional planning staff, so you've heard a lot of comments from the community that have some consensus. How do you, how do you manage that? How do you speak to those comments?
Because I was the guy, I, I.
Or whoever the, you know.
I think so, I think, I think, so there were, it was a long process where we were going to be at design guidelines and how the buildings would interact and face surrounding neighborhood. I think a couple of things have happened. One is, you know, we're not seeing, so this is an area where we do envision more dense, intense development and it hasn't been happening. There's a lot of reasons for that. High interest rates, construction cost, I think that we feel that some of the standards that were there may get much more challenging to develop some of these narrower sites along Winchester and so given the larger sort of vision of urbanizing the corridor, we thought it was appropriate to make some modifications to those. The other thing I would note is that there were citywide design standards that were developed that have stepped down and setback requirements, super standards within that that are much more, you could say, urban or aggressive or less, you know, less sensitive or, you know, they don't require, as, as we had said, they don't require that as much of a step down and so the proposal or our recommendation you have is not going citywide design standards. It's actually kind of finding more of a middle ground, that is sort of more of the spirit of what the plan was while allowing this development to move forward. So I think it is the desire to see some new development and come up with standards that would actually facilitate development of the properties along Winchester, which has not been happening.
And would you say that in the process of planning, that is, text amendments to general plan, specific plans are common or uncommon?
They're not that, well, we had, I think we had a few, but it's not that common.
And then if this was a different use, using the existing, the new state laws, if someone wanted to do a residential project with the density bonuses, those, with that type of project, would that ability to go forward and have height and shadowing wouldn't be a factor based on state law?
Right, so if a project, it would need to include, you can use density bonus, which requires some amount of affordability. It depends on the level of affordability, maybe five percent or ten percent or fifteen, just depends. And then you get certain number of concession waivers depending on how much affordability, but by including some level of affordability in market rate project or a hundred percent affordable project, you can use concession and waivers to essentially eliminate step downs, setbacks, all of that stuff if it makes the project feasible.
So when members of the committee are concerned about the outline of building the box and it's a commercial project versus some of the ones that you discussed, at the end of the day, that box feels substantially based on new state law. And, you know, it just happens that then if this project doesn't qualify for that because it's commercial versus, okay, thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Yeah, Commissioner Cantrell?
So I, I, I'm kind of confused because it seems too easy, right? It was a little, I, I don't, it seems like there's a component, there's a legal component, there's a process with greater, people make concessions. And when developed, can have line items changed specifically for their project that then will impact other projects in the future. Is it really that simple?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, is the proposal can, would, the height is specific to this property, but some of the other changes would have, would go into effect on Winchester as well for the reasons I described. So I mean, again, there is the applicants proposing changes, that's why we're here tonight, so you have to consider these changes and.
Oh, I don't know if we're just here to consider the changes. I think, you know, the city staff has already considered the changes and informed. Right, I mean, that's, that's the study here. I also I made some notes as we were going along here. I just want to, I forgot to say thank you for coming and speaking in any direction of what you believe or feel about the project. We don't often get a lot of people and a lot of voices and for me, it's the best part of this non-paying job. Because I can hear what you're thinking. So thank you for that. And thank you for bringing forth the project when you're trying to make a difference for San Jose. Of course, we'd all prefer housing. The world is different. But I do want to draw one distinction. That if this was a project receiving a density bonus, it would give the communities, San Jose, a significant bonuses. So I don't think that's a fair comparison. You would get affordable houses.
You'd get what?
Affordable houses. If this were a density bonus configuration, we would also get affordable houses. So it's, it's that an apples-to-apples comparison. So we have a plan, we have agreement on a plan, and then we have a substantial change to the plan based on a need. So what we're really trying to decide, and I just correct you if I'm wrong, is if we value the hotel over the community's needs?
Well, I think it's not just the hotel. I think from our perspective, there's a need to change the, the, the design standards in all of Winchester because of the depth of the lots and make development possible.
It shouldn't have to be a different process, obviously.
Yes, yes, it should.
Alright, that's, thank you.
Alright, so I see Commissioner Young, Commissioner Bigford and, okay, so Young, Bigford and Garcia and Torius. Okay, and I just want to politely ask members of the public to not give further comments at this time. Okay, so I have a bunch of questions myself. First off, there were some concerns raised during public comment about the notification for this project and I'm just, could staff just explain how the city's notification rules apply in this case and what they would require?
So we follow our, sorry, from the staff report, City Council Policy six dash thirty, I think, which identifies projects based on community interest. This, because it's a general plan change, is a significant community interest and depending on the type of project, then there's a noticing radius from the project site. So my understanding is that significant projects have a one-thousand-foot radius. So you would receive a postcard, the owner and the resident of properties within a thousand feet of that site should receive a notice. We send these out several weeks before a hearing. It includes information on the planning commission hearing and the city council hearing as well as information on how to contact the project planner. There's also an onsite notice for, once the project starts, it's posted on the site and that's where they can obtain more information.
Okay, thank you, Ruth. And my follow-up question to that is, in a case like this where the general plan tax amendment concerns things that were established in Urban Village Plan, is the one-thousand-foot radius from the lot that the tax amendment is specific to or the entire urban village?
From the project site, the property.
So that is what is required by city policy, okay? Alright, I'm not sure if that seems like the way it should be to me, but I just want to clarify that that is what the requirement is. Okay, and then, let's see, so I guess kind of also in the same vein as some of the things Commissioner Cantrell was asking. So in my view, and there are two major goals in adopting a urban village plan. One is to allow community input to upfront before individual projects come in, set a vision for how an area is going to develop. And then also to streamline the process for when those projects come through. But you said that those two are, that's accurate, that those are two major goals? And so, I guess, and as Commissioner Cantrell asked and was answered, this, it's not common to make these kinds of amendments. I guess what I'm wondering is, so we haven't been doing urban villages for that long in San Jose, I think since twenty-eleven, is that correct? To twenty-fourteen, or around there?
Well, they were approved by, the general plan was approved in twenty-eleven and we started doing them.
Okay. Right, so is that, right, and so is there any process for, because, you know, urban villages don't necessarily get all built out within a quick amount of time. So is there any process for going back and reevaluating an urban village plan? Is there anything that automatically happens so that like, like, is this still the way we want to do it? Is that updated? Have things changed? Is there any process for that or is it really just through these tax amendments that might be privately initiated?
There, there is no formal process for that. I mean, we could do that. I think right now the pressure is on us to do as many of these plans. Sixty-four urban villages and we've done fourteen plans. The way the general plan was set up before, it wasn't intending to have all those urban villages be able to house. The general plan was amended as part of the four-year review, so now the rush is on, getting it done. So it could happen, we would have to get council direction and find.
Yeah, okay.
But there's not a formal sort of every forty years, maybe ten years.
Right, and the reason I bring that up is because. Right, and the reason I bring that up is because, I mean, I totally recognize the possibility that, you know, an urban village plan might be set up a certain way, and, you know, the city finds that it doesn't lead to the kind of development that the city was trying to stimulate, and that it might need to be changed. I guess, it's unfortunate, I, I see it as very unfortunate that the only way currently to address that is through an amendment like this because...
Private amendment.
Right, a private amendment for a specific property because that, to me, at least seems to contradict the spirit of why we do urban village plans. And at the same time, I recognize that getting through these urban village plans is a large undertaking, and staff has already been swamped with that. I'm not saying council necessarily should be handing down a requirement for this, like, immediately, but I do think it's a hole in our policy. Let's see.
I should add that, I, I just remembered, so we haven't had a lot of private change in the land. We do have them, we had, one comes to mind. Where developers wanted to do high-density where it wasn't allowed. And in particular, there was a, a community who was adamant that high-density should not happen on industrial property by the power stations, as far as basically open or... So that was some changes that were made. So it's not, it's not something that happens regularly, but it happens now.
Right, okay. I think that concludes my questions for now. I'll let other commissioners give their input. Commissioner Young?
Yes. So first of all, thank you all for being here. As was previously stated by Commissioner Cantrell, we really appreciate you being here in person, especially. I, I know it's not convenient to come down and spend your time, so we really appreciate you being here. Okay, so I have a question for the applicant. I was not on the commission when the original project was approved. So you have a, you have a project approved, correct?
Yes, I did.
Okay.
But that was a special use permit, it wouldn't have come through the commission.
Correct.
It was, it was, and a director hearing.
That's, that's fine. Can you tell me, what, what is that project that's been approved?
It's 27 residential units and 12,000 square feet of commercial, both on the ground floor, 8,000 square feet, and the balance of it on the second floor.
Okay, what is the height of the building?
65 feet.
So it's six stories?
Five stories.
Five stories.
65 feet.
Retail on the ground floor and 27...
27 residential condominium units. And the reason why was that number was restriction as far as the total density allowed to burn.
Okay, well, is the, the ingress and access to that project from Olin the same as this project?
Yes.
Okay. So, and, and one, thank you, one further question for you, sir. If, so, you're saying that the project is, that project is not feasible currently?
Correct.
Could you just, I know you mentioned interest rates, but could you just elaborate a little bit on why that project is not feasible?
It, it, it's not, there's not a return threshold, not on a return that I would like, but a return that a capital group would like to provide the construction financing. So basically, it's not financeable.
Okay, so let me ask you a further question. We, we've heard on this commission that mixed-use commercial, ground floor, residential is no longer really... We've heard this from other folks. What if it was a purely residential condominium building? Have you concerned that? Would that be feasible?
Prior to moving forward with the hotel, I had quite a bit of interface with senior planning staff with respect of trying to modify the existing approvals to, to go forward with, with that. And polite answer was, that won't, that won't happen. So I looked at it from the standpoint of, versus just sitting on the dilapidated gas station in, in disrepair to move forward with a complete redesign of the project to a hotel, looking for the need for additional 20 feet in height to meet the project.
Okay, thank you. So now I have a question, a couple of questions for our planning staff. Number one, so the applicant stating that he came in asking for what modifications might be possible and was told that complete residential was not an option, is that correct?
Yeah, that's correct. So when we do an urban village plan, we plan for where the, the, the planned employment or commercial growth is going to go and where the housing will go. And so we have to make sure we're going to accommodate both. And, you know, the decision in that process was really to designate Winchester really as for commercial use as not residential. So we use the mixed-use neighborhood, mixed-use commercial designation, which is a commercial designation. Which says, if you could do the commercial, well, okay, that's fine, you could do housing too, but it really is a commercial designation.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Rio, that makes sense, I understand that. So another question for staff, when was the Santana Row Valley Fair Urban Village Plan approved?
2017, right?
Please, sir.
I don't know.
It's August 8th, 2017.
2017, okay. So my question is, what has changed between now and then that would justify these amendments? Because as several of the speakers noted, it sounded like, well, a number of these folks were on the, you know, the urban village task, I'm not sure what the term is, but the task force that developed that. And it sounded like the community made a lot of hard concessions even at that time. So, so what has changed between now that would justify this amendment?
Yeah, I think what's changed is that, that we're finding challenges and have, you know, we're actually not seeing a lot of development, frankly, you know, in, in much of urban village. But I think we were finding that, that, I think it was a 40-foot setback on parcels that aren't this deep is, is creating challenges. And then this, this, the 45-degree angle plane is creating challenges for getting to a level... In the, in the, in the marketplace. So, so I think we, we, and, you know, again, the changes we were recommending were sort of, you understand that people don't like it, that where the city developed urban village slash citywide design guidelines had buildings that were like this. And where this was, was like this. And so we're saying, well, why didn't we tweak it so it's like that? And so we thought it was a, a good compromise. It was, at least the step down itself was a slight modification. And then the setback went from 40 to 20. Yeah, which is, is a lot still more substantial than the citywide design standards.
And then mixed-use commercial zoning district, which allows, which the maximum, I think, is 10 feet.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Do we have someone either here on Zoom from Department of Transportation?
No, I don't think so.
Okay. I'm just going to say that's unfortunate and problematic because a lot of the folks here expressed concern with traffic. I believe they're correct, but I don't know. Since we don't have anybody from PD or law enforcement here, I don't think private no-turn signs are legally enforceable. But since we have nobody here that can answer that question, I guess I'll move on, which is...
I, I would just add, though, that lots of these sort of, like, traffic calming measures, more of the, the transportation analysis is taken care of during the special use permit evaluation. And that's where you have conditions for projects, like, something like that, right? Like, you have to put this no-left turn or no-right turn. With the general plan text amendment, there's no conditions or no space for us to make those kind of conditions.
Which I, and, so I'm fairly new on the commission. And I think part of my confusion, and maybe some of the residents, is this feel like, this feels like we're approving a project, right? We, we see a diagram of a hotel, it exits planes and all this. But in actuality, we're approving a text amendment only, correct? And then the developer, the applicant would have to come back for, for the project or with the project and go to a director's hearing?
And go to a director's hearing.
Correct.
Director's hearing, okay.
And it is a text amendment. So again, if this project gets approved forward, and the general plan text amendments are approved, it could be another project. And there could be another project that's not on the site, but is, you know, three doors down. Now, the heights are not changing three doors down, but the step down and setback requirements would be changed if still on another site as well. So we, you know, the staff didn't, wasn't proposing, we just change it. Those aren't just a specific property, it makes sense to change it.
So the, you know, there's been some, I guess, assertions by, by some of the residents that these, these changes apply throughout the urban village. So what, is it specifically the area along Winchester, Mr. Rio, that you're looking at?
Rena has a map that she can show.
Commissioner, just to clarify, while you're asking about, like, what the impacts would be based off of the amendments that are proposed throughout the urban village, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, so I do apologize, I did, more of a, of the urban village plan. I can go back to the, the entire land use map if you need sort of a reference. But essentially, for the analysis piece, for the analysis piece, we have, the blue outline is the current residential and urban residential land use designations. And so if you'll notice, these are the areas where, if with an approved text amendment would have the 20 feet setback and 55-degree daylight plane for any new commercial development. And so the top left is, the top left is where the subject site is, 425 South Winchester Boulevard.
Yeah, you can use a roster, sure. That'll also help the folks out.
Oh, thank you. I do apologize if everyone can see it, but here is the subject site. So this is the Winchester, South Winchester Boulevard Street. Here is the 425 South Winchester Boulevard site. And these are the residential, and this is Spar Avenue here. And the bottom here is the Olin Avenue. Over to the right-hand side, this is closer to... Bay 80.
Eighty.
Bay 80. I apologize, thank you.
Sixty.
Yeah, Bay 80. And then the bottom left is where, just look here. The bottom left is south of Olin Avenue. So near the Santana West Building, which is the focal here, so kind of towards the west here. And then underneath that is the, just further south, essentially, is the ground, is the urban residential land use designation, which is different from the yellow, which is residential.
Okay, I'll be honest with you, I'm completely confused at this point, and I'll tell you why. And it's probably, maybe I'm not understanding, but if you're saying it's within the areas of the blue line, these are, these are residences, and my understanding from Mr. Rio is we're looking at more along Winchester?
It's the changing of when you're, the post-text amendment. So there are standards when you're next to a single-family neighborhood, which is the yellow.
Okay, okay.
And so the tweaks are saying, instead of having a 45-daylight plane, you can have a 55-daylight plane, instead of having a 40-foot setback, you can have a 20-foot setback, is for those commercial areas, the MUC.
Okay.
The orange.
The orange.
Orange.
Okay.
That are adjacent to the yellow areas.
Okay.
It's not, it's kind of reversed. It's, the blue should be on the orange and not the yellow. It's the yellow or the neighborhoods that are, are, single-family neighborhoods that are affected.
Okay, I, that's great, that, that clarifies a lot. Chair, that's all the questions I have for now, I'll reserve some time later.
Okay, if I could just ask a question, I think, just to clarify, and I think it's relevant to what Commissioner Young was asking. Can you just briefly explain why this particular project would be a special use permit rather than something that would come through this commission? I, I know it's just because of the type of project, that's what it's subject to, but I just think we can just clarify that for...
I, I would need to look up the zoning code itself, but I think in the MUC zoning district, hotels require a special use permit. I'm not sure why.
Okay.
Versus a site development permit.
Okay, thank you. All right, Commissioner Bigford, thanks.
So just, I want to carry over from what Commissioner Young was asking about. There were several comments from the community about traffic, about parking, about traffic calming. And I felt that the rather cavalier response about putting up a sign didn't really address what we heard from the community. I have been to Santana Row, I don't go there anymore because the traffic is horrendous because there is no parking. This property doesn't have enough parking. And I heard somebody mention that there's a, a, looking for off-site parking, which doesn't sound like calming traffic to me, it sounds like creating war. And I'm, I, I would love to hear from somebody that actually looked at this from a traffic standpoint for the neighborhood, not just people turning one way when they should be turning another, but how much additional traffic, 190-something rooms, was it?
176.
76, thank you, is, is going to have in that corridor. And how it, it might be affected by there, there's a, I drove by here and it looks like there's a lot of other, we'll call it vacant space, but it's adjacent space that would need to be constructed or would, would have to have something done with it. And there's still not a parking plan or a plan for how traffic would be raised. And it just, I, I would like to know more about that, if we can find a way to sort some of that.
You guys want to check out the...
I go. Both the VMT and transportation analysis? Okay, the local transportation analysis, yeah. So, coordinations on the sequel planner for this one. So, specific to the city's transportation analysis handbook and looking at VMT vehicle miles traveled, the project satisfies a, an aspect of the city transportation analysis handbook under a local serving retail criteria. So basically, any retail under 100,000 square feet total gross floor area is presumed to have a less than significant VMT impact. So, VMT, vehicle miles traveled is the way that transportation is evaluated under CECL. So, less than significant VMT impact under CECL. So, under that, there's no transportation impact for VMT specifically.
That's it. You said retail, this is a hotel.
So it's, it covers a mixed-use projects?
Hotels are specifically very different in terms of vehicle miles than anything else you're talking about, right? I mean, that's, that's a very, it's a very different distinction, right? Seems like that, you're, you're talking about retail, but not hotels? I mean, you know, people come to a hotel with their car, to travel in a community with their car. It's not the same as going from home to a shop or to work, right? This is, seems like it would be significantly higher traffic for a hotel than it would be for general retail.
Chair, does staff want to answer, does CECL distinguish the difference between retail and hotel?
So, this, it's the, the retail component of the hotel classified this into a mixed-use project instead of simply a straightforward hotel project?
Hotels, yeah, a retail project for the purposes of VMT.
Yeah, it'd be just a mixed-use project.
Yes.
Okay.
And then, and then there's also a localized transportation analysis, LTA, right? That's definitely part of it.
So just to, I can just clarify, so you're saying because there's both retail and a hotel...
So just to, I can just clarify, so you're saying because there's both retail and a hotel use, that means that it is evaluated as a mixed-use project for the purposes of VMT analysis under CECL?
That's right.
Okay, is that, is that city policy or is that state law? And if that's also.
Okay, city policy, city policy by dash one, so transportation analysis policy. Okay, it's based upon.
Yeah, if we could, if, I just want to make sure we're not doing too many things at once. If folks have clarification questions, we can take those, just let's try to hear the answer to one question, and then I can recognize folks for their questions.
Thank you for, for clarifying that, that was my other question.
Okay, just to be clear that there are also some LTA. So that, that, the VMT, so you need to discuss that.
So, David Keon, that's our planner on the city's environmental review team, so just want to clarify. So, since 2020, the state law, it said that every jurisdiction in California must change your metrics for how they evaluate transportation. So it went, prior to that day, actually, San Jose was a bit of an earlier because we were ahead of the curve. But essentially, prior to that time, level of service intersection congestion was the metric used for determining transportation attacks. That is no longer allowed by state law. Instead, it's how much, how much distance you are traveling in a vehicle rather than how many vehicles are added to a roadway. It's essentially getting a greenhouse gas emission reductions and not getting on congestion on roadways. So because of that, the city has the transportation policy, well, it's not that new anymore, but the transportation analysis policy by dash one. It's based upon vehicle miles traveled. The vehicle miles traveled for this project are less than significant, and part of that's the fact that there's a lot of development in the area. So you have the benefits of having developed it, or areas around the site that people could walk to that reduces the amount of of vehicle, not of distance in vehicles that have to direct travel. However, as an informational, as part of informing for public works, there's also required for what's called a local transportation analysis. This is also included in the, as part of attachment to the initial study that was circulated for public review. And this explains other aspects of the project, for example, like, and how it's going to impact operations, how it's going to, oh, through traffic. It's various aspects that are not covered under CECL, but are definitely as informational sources are provided as part of it. So all that is provided in local transportation analysis. And public works reviews that in terms of if there's special conditions needed, for example, limiting right turns, limiting left turns. If there should be certain improvements needed, it would improve traffic. So that is all included in the, that is all an attachment to the initial study.
Is that person with the applicant or? No, this is a, he's from CitySouth. All right, so Commissioner Garcia.
Just clarifying, so, so that document is done and available for?
Yes.
Was it in our packet?
Yes.
Okay, I didn't see it, thank you.
Commissioner Garcia?
Well, thank you. So, yeah, I share many of the concerns that the community has expressed in, in both commissioners as well. The primary concerns are with the setbacks being modified, the planes, and, and the process, because as stated, we're not reviewing a project. We're, we're doing a general plan tech amendment, so it seems like the process should have been different. The other, the, the other thing that bothers me is that these plans, there's from 17 and from current project, who's moved in 2020. Real estate is a long-term view, planning is a long-term view. And these, these, these amendments seem to be quite premature in the scope of, of the long-term view. I, I think it's too early to, I understand we want more development, I understand that we're in certain economic conditions where financing or capital might be more expensive than it was. But it's not permanent, it's going to change, and, and I think we have to be patient and have a, have a longer-term view and, and, and not be too quick to, to make these types of changes. That, that not just affect this lot or this adjacent lots, but the whole urban village of Santana Row. So, I, I can't, I can't support this project. I'd go as far as to saying I'd like to make a motion to, to, to not approve these amendments. I can't see this happening right now.
Okay. I just have a follow-up question for city attorney, is there, is there a second to that? I guess, is there a second to Commissioner Garcia's motion? It's like a full permission for you. So I, are there any, i- i- if we're going to do that, is there anything that has to be specified in the motion, the findings or?
Yeah, so staff laid out their recommendations to approve or recommend improving projects or the text amendment. So you have to go through this analysis to basically find, you know, or make the analysis for the opposite. So, you have to go through the analysis shown in the staff report, and I can, I don't know if you want to make it for both, the CECL resolution and for the text amendment, or just text amendments and not the CECL resolution and others. They both have findings.
Okay. I, I think, the way I would do this is, we still have, and sorry.
Necessarily findings per se for the text amendments, but you have to find that they're not conforming to the general one.
Right, okay. And this is a clarifying question about this process?
Yeah, I guess. Would there be a difference here versus if we had a, the opposite motion for approval and voting against that? In terms of whether we need to make additional findings, just legislative?
That's my question.
I'm wondering if that might be simpler, while allowing folks to think. If we instead just had a motion to approve the staff recommendation, and then folks voted against that, is that what just had a difference here in terms of the findings that need made?
Yeah, because I think there's only three things we could do, well, not, not really three, but we could approve the staff recommendation, we could make some other recommendation, or we could not make a recommendation. So, yes. Uh, I think as a matter of procedure, because I don't think it's explicitly specified how to handle this. I want to take any further discussion from other commissioners, and then after that, we could consider Commissioner Garcia's motion and what findings would need to be included in that if we were going to consider it. So I, Commissioner Forio, so I've had yours down for a while, and Kentrell, across afterwards.
Chair, I think like some of my other commissioners here, I would also prefer this were remaining a residential project. I had a question for the applicant in terms of the feasibility of the previous residential proposal. Specifically, you know, we know that the previous small-scale residential proposal that was five stories was not being financially feasible. I'm wondering if a residential project with these increased heights and decreased setbacks and daylight planes, if that would affect the feasibility of residential on the site? Or if any of the state laws that we've mentioned today that allow residential in commercial zones and could thereby, you know, allow some additional residential density could also affect the feasibility?
Right, that's an excellent question. And I looked at all those angles before proceeding forward with this hotel. I wouldn't have proceeded forward with a hotel, expending the type of funds I've had to expend to get to this point in time. So I appreciate that, that, that nut ship has sailed as far as looking at other opportunities. If it's denied tonight, my, my choices are twofold. To sit on a dilapidated service station. Just leave it like that. Or look to the city council to uphold the, the project if it, if we're moving forward to go forward. That's, that's, that's exactly what's in part today.
Thank you. I guess one more quick question. So, is it accurate to say that it's really a question about the ability to get financing for a residential project versus a hotel project in this location, unless about, you know, the specific variables involved?
As pointed out by staff, when you have the 45-degree daylight plane, you have a stepping of a building. It adds tremendous cost to the structure. That's why we went back and we decided it's an L-shaped structure to, to allow for a more efficient building to be built. Room sizes are smaller on a, on a hotel, there's many things that go differently in a hotel than you do on a residential project. We took out a level of low-grade parking, I know there was a comment with respect to parking. I've been in dialogue with federal realty on, on several occasions. They politely said, Mark, we've got a whole little bit on our 1,100 parking stalls that we have right across the street. Because we're trying to land a major office tenant. And I'm encouraging them to do that, but there's parking around at, at the area in several different locations, whether or not I've had interface with Big Five. They don't use their parking in the evening, and they could use the addition wherever everything that comes in on evening parking there. There's a lot of different places where we can, can find parking. Most of the users of a hotel are, are coming on a Uber or a Lyft. The hotel operator, which is sidelined off, hospitality's has been working in lockstep with us to date. They're very comfortable with the number of parking stalls we have to date. In perspective of finding new thing outside of the area, and the city has been old enough to remove parking requirements for commercial properties, getting people into Ubers and Lifts and getting them out of their sedans. So that's what this vision is for, for this property.
Mark, if you're satisfied about residential feasibility, on our 26th, the city council held a study session about residential feasibility in the city, with their outside consultant presenting the results, their findings. It basically showed that across, you know, all the higher municipality construction types, residential feasibility. Presidential development is not feasible in the city.
Yeah, we reviewed that same study a couple weeks ago, so definitely understand the constraints that are facing residential projects right now. My next question was for staff. You know, we've heard a lot from the community that they don't see a kind of benefit for the surrounding community from this sort of project. I think from my perspective, I do see, you know, some degree of benefit, just in terms of replacing a junk gas station with a nice new building. I think there's something to be said of that. But I also think that there's something to be said about additional revenue for the city. You know, San Jose and California as a whole faces a pretty, you know, anemic property tax base for historical reasons, and this would allow both at one-time revenue from construction taxes and commercial linkage fees, but also ongoing revenue from property tax increases as well as, you know, hotel taxes. So I'm curious if staff could speak to that angle a little bit, and some of the things that add additional revenue reaction or fund?
What exactly, what, do you know?
Well, TOT tax, I don't, a lot of it goes to arts and cultural activities.
Tran, uh, TOT is?
Tran, uh, trend and arts.
Trend of.
It just goes to all of that. Some of it goes to arts and culture, and they, they mount it. Not sure. Exactly. I'm not sure what that all, the rest of it goes to, and then that rest of it just goes on general.
But the council can direct it anywhere they want, it's not by charter.
Do you remember what it all goes to? I think you have a condition.
The benefits of city.
Yeah. But we don't know how much we do that at all, so it's like.
I think this is a difficult project, obviously, we've heard a lot of opposition today from members of the community. I am, you know, especially sensitive to things that have been raised, both from the community and from the commissioners. But the idea that, you know, we set out this plan, and now we're deviating from that plan. I think I have a little bit of a different perspective there, just because I do know that these have to, to some extent, be living documents. And these urban village plans are part of the general plan, which has long-term goals for the city. If you just look at, you know, some of the goals of the general plan in terms of increasing the intensification of our development, providing more commercial lands for jobs and revenue generation for the city. I think this does check some of those boxes. So to the extent that we lay out these plans and then development doesn't happen, you know, six years isn't a long time in real estate development, so it's also not nothing. So I think that the city does have to, you know, have a process to be nimble and respond to market conditions if the development that they're targeting is not actually happening. Thank you, Commissioner Forio, yeah, go ahead, Commissioner Kentrell.
Right on the next, here's the problem. We're using general plan amendments by a developer as a multi-site widget to solve the problem of not actually giving market conditions consideration in the development of these plans. That's important. This, this pedal push up and down with general plan amendments should be designed for different vehicles. I really, I've been in business, I've been working consulting with this my entire career, except for last year. I have tremendous empathy for you. I understand, I'm the guy, I understand what market conditions do. And when you're in the middle of them, you need a way to move from. I understand, and I am sorry. This process should not be that. There should be a different process for this, and I'm certain there is. And it won't be discovered if we don't prove this, because I, I don't think this journey wants to go away. So I think there's a process, but this isn't it. And I, I think the mistake is to use these types of amendments to fix a market condition specifically, problem for one developer that has lasting impact on the community and potentially other projects. It needs to be much more thoughtful than that. So with that, whatever we decide to do, I cannot in good conscience agree to this process that we will have to figure out and undo later. So, thank you.
Commissioner White, and then Commissioner Forio, and then Commissioner Alferro.
I, um, I thank everyone for being here. I appreciate the community, all its concerns, I also appreciate Mark, who came in. I, as an urban planner, my profession would prefer to see a vibrant use of land, because we are, we want to be good stewards of land. We want to see community come together. And instead of a dilapidated building or structure or empty space, especially something right across the street from Santana Row, I think it's a perfect opportunity there to bring everyone together and to have more families and, you know. So for me, the rezoning makes sense. Even the height, after seeing the shadowing, I don't see a significant difference. I think that's good. The text amendment, the, the, the issue that I have is where then it goes to amending figure 5.3, no setback and no step-back plane are required for new commercial development adjacent to sites that have a residential neighborhood, land use designation where there's existing legal established commercial use. Everything else I'm okay with. And just because it's project-specific, because it's your parcel, right? That makes sense. But for the rest of the corridor, I, I think that that should be based on each. Yeah, like everything else I'm okay with, makes sense. And even if we approved the project today, I mean, given the market conditions that we're going through, we don't even know. If, I mean, I hope you'd be able to build it, right? I, I would be in favor of it, except for amending figure 5.3. Just because I don't want to set a precedent for the rest of the community, I want the community to have the opportunity, when those different projects come in, to be on a case-by-case basis. So I, I'm okay with everything else, except this one that would alter the rest. Although I do appreciate planning, maybe having the insight that obviously there's been some, I mean, you think of Winchester Boulevard as a corridor, right? That's having a lot of action, we've seen a lot of residential and affordable housing. I, San Jose is seen as a federal community, I would like to see that economic development. There's already stimulus there, I believe that this could spill over. Of course, I'm a mom of young children, I do think that what you put in a community should be local-serving. You know, I'm always like, okay, uh, where's the playground for the children? You know, to allow families that live in the community, if there's like a restaurant there, maybe have it be like family style where they do have like some play area for the, the children. So that parents that want to go out for dinner have a place for their children. I would really like to see the integration of the designs that, you know, we're not just, you know, just us, we're a family, that means the, the grandma, the children, everyone, we all kind of want to go out together, right? So, I'm in, in favor of everything except for amending figure 5.3.
So one quick clarified question for staff. Are there any other sites within the urban village that are subject to being changed to figure 5.3? And that their residential neighborhood that have an existing legal commercial use?
If my analysis, um, no.
So then it would only affect this parcel, that. So then it would only affect this parcel that that changed. It wouldn't affect anyone. Okay, well, then I guess I'm in favor of everything.
Does that conclude your comments?
Yes.
Can I clarify? So why put it in there?
As opposed to a site specifically?
Yeah, instead of just being specific to the site.
I think we thought it would be more clear in the plan itself versus having little asterisks and addresses. So it would achieve, I think, the same thing, but we didn't, just for clarity purposes of how we end up doing these documents.
Which is your question, Commissioner, on why we're proposing this or how? There's a reason why, that there was a different proposal originally and it was changed.
So I think why we're proposing this is because we built a plan that didn't consider the eventual change of market conditions away from commercial use to an extent that we did. I think that's why. I don't think this widget solves that problem. So what I would like is to be able to solve that problem. And I'm sure you would like to be able to solve that problem because we all want to see more housing development. And specifically, this commercial requirement impacts that too significantly to the urban housing. My, the answer to your question is, it doesn't solve the problem that we're trying to solve. We should admit that and we should move forward and change it so that market conditions don't always collide with development of housing. There needs to be a break in the end.
And so I just want to ask folks.
So actually, before we go there, looking at this picture, I see a lot of residential around a lot of orange. And that's not the same problem. So wouldn't this impact those other areas?
The language says that it would apply to R N, so whatever's yellow. But only if those sites that are yellow have an existing legally established commercial use.
And three ninety spars.
Okay, then.
That's the.
And also, I just, I think we're losing procedure a little bit here. I'm keeping a speaking order. If, if folks want to ask us a quick clarification on something in the moment, that's totally fine. But if you have a longer comment, please give my attention. I'll put you on the list of, but folks can go in order. So next I have Commissioner Perosio and then Commissioner Oliverio.
Thank you.
I'll keep mine brief. Thank you everyone for being here. The process that Commissioner Cantrell talks about in terms of if, you know, this isn't the widget, the forum, the, the space for this to happen, which I totally agree. I think if there's been analysis in meetings, I think we need to honor that. I think to have a meeting where we recommend something to the council with our stamp, right? With our community, you know, as community members, I think that's not the space. But my question to staff is, what would be the alternative process? Is there something established or does there need to be, you know, addenda made at the council level for such amendments to app inside of the commission? Let, but through another way.
Are you saying, I think, leaving off of what I think Commissioner Oliverio's asking is, what would be the process to do more sort of a relook, a revisum?
Right, yeah. Does one exist and if not, what? What needs to happen now for such recommendations from a private party or even from the community? That they want to shift the established agreed upon urban village plans? Because right now, apparently it looks like there could be a private entity that could recommend and we would entertain it and then say yea or nay, and then it goes to council, right? So that seems to be the current practice. Is that the only option? Or is there other options that could be explored? But maybe this one's easier right now for the interested party, the private party, that they pick this route. Is there another route? And if not, where could that other route possibly be with our current structures? Yeah, so there is no current structure to review, but the general plan is a formal review.
I think what he's asking though is not necessarily general plan amendment. Is there an amendment?
No, no, hang on. So there is a formal process to like go back. Because the general plan, that's every four years. There isn't for the villages. The only exception is as part of the housing element, you know, look items to go back and look at. How can we facilitate housing if it's not working? So that, but that's more of a, a global thing, that we look at each village. So, um, but what the council had to do is say, hey, council direct, direct staff to go through a process to do that. And what is the scope of work? So the scope of work could be very limited, it could be very expansive. They don't have to come from council and then the council will then need to go down and find things to go through. And if they do that, would that capture all the sixty-three urban plans? Or would it just be one urban plan to the next urban plan? Well, council can do whatever they want. I think, given that council wants us to get these plans done yesterday, I can't imagine it tells us to go do the ball. They could do that or they could say, given what's happening in this area, whatever it may be, market forces are changing or there's issues coming out of staff, we want you to go back and engage the community to open up this plan, talk about amendments to the plan. They're independent of private development. And then the scope would be whatever the council decides. It may be very limited, it could be very expansive. On the circumstances of what council's design is on. Could council say something where they do that? But it sort of sounds like if they do that, it's sort of a one-off, please look at this. Please correct me if I'm wrong. Is that, I don't see that being something that could be baked in in terms of policy or legislation. Is that something that could be something that could not just be a one-off? Hey, this committee made a lot of noise, let's take another look. But something that could go in to protect all communities?
If I could, maybe, Michael, if you feel like I'm not answering correctly, but I speak succinctly. I mean, I think you're talking about like, what hypothetically could council do on a policy? And like, Michael said, they really could create any policy they wanted. But nothing like what you're talking about exists currently.
And I think the challenge is that they could do a further review for urban village plans or a ten-year review. The challenge is we don't have the capacity to get the plans that are the urban villages. We already have a general plan done, so housing community forum. So I think it'd have to be a choice that the council has to make. How do you want to revisit the plans, like comprehensively, they've already approved versus should we be spending our research on that? Or should we be doing, sending our researches on doing new urban village plans, like more housing in other places in the city? So that would be a tough policy decision. And, and in those policy revisits, could it be put in place where if there is going to be amendments to the language, that it has to come through the grassroots, right? It has to come through the neighborhood and not necessarily from private development. But I understand, right? We don't want to leave a stakeholder out or, you know, not invite him to the table, but how strong could that? What if that? I mean, council could do whatever they want to do. I mean, typically when they ask us to update a plan, it's not. It, 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 it could be for a whole host of reasons. A lot of times is that market conditions have changed or other circumstances have changed. The plan that we have is obsolete and needs to be updated. It could be driven by the development community appropriate in terms of changes. And instead of doing a GPA, they approach the council and say, I think we need to revisit this plan. And as part of the process, council will give direction of what they need. Typically, what we think it would probably would look like is there'd be a series of community meetings and talking about, you know, those changes and feedback on that and kind of developing something that, you know, gets it with council direction while also getting input and, and shaping it for community and other stakeholders. And my last question. If, and, and I know Commissioner Tordeos did bring up an interesting way we can vote. Another, you know, maybe a substitution amendment that maybe could limit the paperwork we have to do, but gets to the same thing that Commissioner Garcia and myself propose. Or he proposed in a second. If, for example, on the current recommendation, we don't recommend a staff recommendations, A one, A two. Does it still go forward to council with the asterisk of, hey, at the planning commission level, they didn't approve, but now it's still up to you?
Yeah, so staff receives, or sorry, city council receives a recommendation from staff and a recommendation from the planning commission. So if we were to take no action tonight, then basically they would have a recommendation from staff and then the planning commission was silent.
Or we do weigh in, but they would just have both data points. They'll have the staff recommendation and then they'll have our recommendation.
Because as I said earlier, there are three things we could do. We can approve the staff recommendation, we can make no recommendation, or we can make some other recommendation.
I suppose going to the director.
So, yeah, to clarify, the general plan tax amendment will go to the council, especially its permit, which is not part of our consideration tonight. Is, goes to the director.
Okay, okay.
And, but is appealable.
That's right. We have heard appeals of special use permits on this mission before.
Yeah.
And so, Commissioner Perosio, just that.
Yes, I was, so it doesn't end here, if, if.
No, we don't, we don't have any keeps going or any other than advisory.
Thank you, that's, that's all.
Okay, um, I see, yeah, Commissioner Oliverio is away for quite a long time. He will speak next. Question also, if you put your hand up so I can record that. Okay, so go ahead, Commissioner Oliverio.
Sure, thank you, Chair. And, uh, yeah, I know a lot of folks said thank you to the public and I do appreciate comments. And I've sat through so many of these urban village meetings over a period of ten years plus. But I also realize people kind of planning commission meetings and we had double or triple the amount of people who came tonight that spoke against a liquor store and we still approved it. So I just have to manage everything within what the city's processes are. I think plans in general, whether it's Philadelphia, San Diego, San Francisco, some plans just sit on shelves and nothing ever happens, right? And so as we've discovered, there is no process. And the reason there is no process is the city has insufficient revenue to fund planning staff to go do this proactively. So how we react to the private market is through a privately initiated amendment. That's the market. Because they're coming forward saying, I could do this project if you make this change, whether you like it or not, right? That's the market. So, um, and, you know, in the past too, I, I think it's important to know, even when we do urban village plans, they're, I think, almost ninety percent grant funded. They come from a federal fund, a state fund, because the city doesn't have the money to pay for that planning process to happen. Outside of urban villages, we've had specific plans in the city for decades. And specific plans are constantly and have been constantly amended and changed to reflect the market. It just has a different name. Instead of calling it specific plan, it's called an urban village. Staff has said, and I've realized, and I think everyone in, in the general city understands that this is a urban commercial area driven by Santana Row and Valley Fair. And the addition of work from network appliance, Splunk and other companies are what's driving the financing for this potential hotel. Because this hotel will be filled by workers and customers of those companies. When I travel for work, I don't take a rental car anymore. No one rents a car anymore. We all take Ubers or Lyft or whatever, and that's how we get to where we go. So I understand why the parking is way different than it historically used to be. And I think it's really important to denote the tax revenue that comes with it, private development such as this. As Commissioner Tordeos pointed out, there's the one-time construction taxes that go to paving arterial roads. There are the funds that go to ongoing funding for all local government, for school, district, city and county, the fund for property tax and the T O T tax, which does go to fund the convention center and the arts. But guess what? If it's not there, the general fund has to fund that. So if you want that park, I know someone on the phone call wanted that park to be completed for it to be maintained and the choir's ongoing revenue. So I think ultimately, and obviously this is always an interesting process for us to go through these discussions. And, and I know the community feels like, what the hell? You know, we sat through these meetings, this is what it is. But at the end of the day, you know, plans can be modified through a public process. And you have an opportunity to weigh in on that process. And ultimately, the city council makes that determination, both on market-driven economics and of what they want. And my, you know, I can't speak for the council. I mean, we try to think what they might say on any given day. We don't know, because they have a hundred percent flexibility to say whatever they want or do whatever they want. But I know as we go into the new year, you know, we're always faced with revenue issues in the city. And I, and it's even though as a resident, you may say, well, that sounds shallow. What about me? You know, I live in the vicinity of this project and all you're talking about is revenue. We do, because when we approve all these low-income projects across the city, they don't pay any property tax. So we're trying to make up for some of that revenue to fund ongoing city services. It's a challenge, I agree, it's not perfect, but at least it's public. If this was China, we'd say you're moving, you know, we're knocking down your house in two days, right? So it's America, we have plenty of democracy here. And ultimately, I'm inclined to support staff's recommendation. Understanding the process is never perfect, but at least it's out in the open and, you know, that's what it is.
Okay. Mr. Oliverio. Okay. Do we have any further discussion from the commission before we move on to consideration of Commissioner Garcia's motion?
I'd like to just weigh in one more time.
Sure.
It's been a really good discussion, actually. This is a really tough call for me. I came in after reading the staff report pretty much in favor of this and then swung the other way. And now I'm not sure, I'll tell you why. I think Commissioner Ellis Wise and Oliverio have made some good points. First of all, a hotel is really good for the city. It does not only, you get property taxed, you get sales tax from the restaurant, and you get transit occupancy tax, which is very high. So as far as trying to help our revenue situation, which we need to do, probably you couldn't build anything better than a hotel from that standpoint. For the residents, we have a real challenge in this city. And the challenge is that almost all of our commercial corridors have single-family residences right next to them. It's very difficult. And I totally understand where you're coming from about why do you want to build this tall building right in the backyard of my house? The problem is, in our city, because so much of it is zoned for single-family houses, if we never did that, if we never built a tall building next to a house, we'd never build anything in the city. So this is, this is a really tough call. And the other thing that's very confusing for me is unfortunately, I think this project is getting mixed in with the amendment itself. However, what I've, what I've now heard from Mr. Brio is that, let's say the council approves this amendment and the applicant goes forward with a project that, let's say the director approves, you all can appeal that approval and it'll come back here to look at the specific project. Because I have concerns about the ingress and exit on the project. I, I don't think it should be on the only avenue. But the more I think about it, that's not really what we're voting on. We're voting on the tax amendments, which, which I think are appropriate because I think we need to intensify the use on Winchester Boulevard. The other thing too is whatever we say is advisory to the council, they're going to make the final decision. So I'm, I'm going to actually, I'm, I'm in favor of the staff recommendations at this point, although it's a tough call.
Yeah, Commissioner Tordeos.
I guess I've never done this before, but logistically, is it possible to make a substitute motion?
Yes.
Yes. Could I make a substitute motion, as the waters here, to approve the staff recommendation?
Second. Okay, so there is a set, a substitute motion from Commissioner Tordeos to, for the staff recommendation. I'm just going to give it to Oliverio because you two spoke almost simultaneously for a second. Okay, so Daniel, just remind us the process for substitute motion.
So you vote on that substitute motion first. If it fails, then you can go back.
Okay, all right, go back to Commissioner Garcia's motion. Okay.
And one more clarifying question. So there's different vote thresholds between two motions, correct?
No, because, yeah, that's a great question. Because, let me explain, see if it clarifies. So, yeah, what Daniel's saying, there's substitute motion on the table, we would consider it. If it passes, we're done with this discussion. If it fails, we'll consider Commissioner Garcia's motion regarding the threshold. Because, there's two motions. One is to approve the project, or rather, approve the staff recommendation of the tax amendment. Another is to recommend rejecting staff's recommendation with specific findings. Both of those because their general plan decisions require a majority of the body rather than a majority of, or majority of the entire membership body rather than a majority of folks who are here today. And so five, six votes instead of five. Okay, yeah, I want to give some comments. Because, yeah, I've, I mean, really, ever since I knew this was going to come before us, I've been thinking about this a lot and been pretty back and forth on it. And, and also just for context, I live in District One, there's projects in District One. I know some of the folks who came to give public comments tonight, and I really thank you for. I know some of the folks who came to give public comment tonight, and I really thank you for doing that. Yeah, so I guess I want to frame my thoughts here in terms of what our role is as a planning commission, because we are not city council. As has been said many times, city council can do whatever they want. If city council, city council sets a policy, if a project comes through and city council wants to make an exception to a policy, they can do that. If they, if a project comes through and it follows policy, but city council wants to deny it, there are some state laws restricting that, but to some extent, they can do that. And if city council feels that a policy is not correct, isn't serving its needs, or if things have changed, city council can change that policy. But we're a planning commission, we're not elected, we don't have the power to set policy. We can make recommendations all we want, we can, we can make any recommendation we want, really. That's, that's anything we want to do, we can do. But, but it's just recommendations. When it comes to projects, our role is to make a decision, not do we think it's a good project, not, it's, does the project follow policy? That is what our recommendations should be, are supposed to be based on. And I just want to go back to some of the things I said earlier. I don't think it's great that, you know, a general plan text amendment that affects an urban village policy that, the notification is only specific to the property, not to the entire urban village plan. I feel like that's a policy that should be, like, that's a flaw in the policy that should be addressed. I also, I don't think it's great that, you know, the only way to update an urban village plan really is through a privately initiated general plan text amendment. I, I think that's a flaw that should be addressed. Saying that, we're working within this context of, those are the policies, those are the realities, and we're supposed to evaluate the project in that context. And just to also clarify, I mean, to some extent, the general plan text amendment itself is a change in policy that we're being asked to evaluate. And I just want to contract, compare and contrast this project. I don't know if folks are aware, just on Stevens Creek Boulevard, just a little bit west of where this is, there's an old Hardee's location, closed down a few years ago. In-N-Out Burger has explored opening a location there, and they did a preliminary review of the city. And the city basically, listen, okay, well, with this project proposal, there's a lot of issues, there's restrictions on late-night uses in this area, there's restrictions on drive-throughs, there's restrictions on street frontage, because we're trying to create a walkable community, and drive-through fast food restaurant is kind of the answer to some of that. And the project consultant asked, well, can we just remove the property from the urban village so we're not subject to those restrictions? And staff said, no, like, that's, that is a bridge too far in terms of changing this for that project. And I bring that up because here we're talking about changing heights and setbacks, which are still a change and still do materially impact what's allowed. But it's adjusting the policy to address, how do I put this? Staff has evaluated it and is recommending that it be approved, because they feel that it is an appropriate adjustment to the policy. So that, that's what me trying to contextualize basically where I'm at with this. I don't think the policy situation that we've been put into is great, but that's what the project is, is in the context of, and I think that's how we should evaluate it. Yeah, so I think that concludes my comments for now. Do we have anyone else who'd like to speak before we?
Just, yeah, Commissioner Kentrell. There are no villains here. Everybody is really here acting in the best interest of the community and the city. I don't want anybody to feel that they're going. I also think there should be no victims. I don't think there should be victims. And that's what planning is all about, giving room for community input, committing to that input, and then moving forward within the confines of what's agreed upon. I also understand that this is a policy change, and I think that is firmly in the hands of the city council. That's, those are elected officials, spend a lot of time and effort to be elected by their peers, their community, and that's where that should be. I don't think this is an appropriate body for policy changes, and that's essentially what this is. So with that, I will say, I hope that we reflect on the fact that there may be victims to this policy change in this room. And that may be an unintended consequence, but in consequence, none of us. We should all consider that before we make this.
Commissioner Kentrell.
I just, I have a comment there, and I appreciate your, your always come from the heart, Commissioner Kentrell, but I got to say, there always are victims in development, because not everyone is a hundred percent agreeing with what they want. I mean, someone probably didn't want the house I built and built today, right? I mean, it's just the inevitable turn of things, and there's always a level of friction in these decisions. Cities are dynamic and constantly changing, and I think the goal would be to have zero, but I think that's not the case. There's always going to be someone that's going to be upset, and that's just.
Even if your opinion is, I can respect your opinion.
If we have no further discussion, Commissioner Torrios has a motion on the table to approve staff recommendation. If that motion passes, then our discussion is done. If it fails, then we will consider Commissioner Garcia's motion to recommend denial. Okay, so if there's no further discussion, we'll go to a roll call vote on Commissioner Torrios' motion. Vice Chair Oliver Wise?
Yes.
Commissioner Barocia?
No.
Commissioner Bigford?
No.
Commissioner Kentrell?
No.
Commissioner Casey is not present, Commissioner Garcia?
No.
Commissioner Oliverio?
Yes.
Commissioner Rosario is not present, Commissioner Torrios?
Yes.
Commissioner Young?
Yes.
And myself, yes. I count five yes, four no. That is not sufficient to pass this motion, because it is a general plan item, so the motion fails. So we'll now consider Commissioner Garcia's motion. So Daniel, could you guide us through how, what would, how the motion would need to be specified to meet legal standards?
Yeah, I mean, the other plan here, other way this happens is if you don't take a vote. For sure. So, but since that is your motion, do you want to go forward with your motion, or do you want to?
Yeah, okay.
So if you want to turn to envision San Jose, general plan performance, there are some general plan goals and policies, this is in the staff report.
I don't think we have paper copies of the staff report. Would it be possible to put that up on the screen? And also, that would be good for the public to be able to follow along.
It's not possible, just to not amend the.
Yeah, I. Justify the motion.
Right, because it's a sequel matter, there's legal robustness required, right?
I mean, you got to give a reason, right? Staff gave a reason why they're supporting, why it's conformant, and if you're going to deny it, you have to deny it, because it's not important.
By definition, it's not conformant, because that's why it's an amendment.
I think it's about conformance to the twenty forty general.
By definition, it doesn't conform, but that's why we're, they're asking you to amend it.
But if you look at the findings in the staff report, it cites specific policies in the twenty forty general plan.
It's an amendment to the urban village plan. It's a GP amendment, but it's, it's an amendment to the plan itself, so you need to make findings of why the amendments actually. It's not a general plan amendment to the general.
It's an amendment to the, to the urban village.
Correct, yeah.
And, and what I was asking is if the urban village, urban village plan just remain as is?
Right, so what you could do is rescind your vote, I mean, rescind your motion, and then just not have a motion, right? No recommendation. But if you wanted to point out how this doesn't conform to the general plan, how this isn't conforming to the urban village, you would have to spell that out.
By definition, it does conform, because we actually change, right?
So staff is recommending that, that change.
It's not a project that we're looking for conformance, it's the change they're proposing. We're saying that proposed change is consistent with the general plan and that it's consistent with the urban village plan.
It is consistent with the urban village plan is what you're saying.
Yes.
What you're asking for, change.
So the way to look at it is like, the changes, we're looking at what other policies, not, not like diagram five-three and five-three, obviously there's conflict there. But there's policies that we cite in our staff report that say, you know, we want vibrant Winchester, we want to promote commercial, we point to that. We're like, this would lead to that, and it's in conformance with that policy.
Right, but the forty-foot setback is in the urban village.
Yes, yes.
So then by definition, changing is not.
Yes.
But then it would not be, I, I, I think your interpretation here is that it would never be possible to change it.
No, I just, we're just saying.
No, but I, I, I get that, but I'm saying, what, Daniel, I think what we're getting at is, all right, let's not have.
You guys do that all the time, and you choose to.
Are there policies up there, or are we saying? It's not, it's, this isn't too hard, you can do it pretty easy. If you look at the analysis that is, we have this at. Page five. Page four, they list the general plan goals and policies, major strategy. Three, policy FS four point one goal, LU four, and then another policy, another policy, and then they have their analysis, right? So that analysis would be one that you would say, especially that last sentence there, the proposed text amendments would allow for an intensification of jobs within this designated growth area, and basically find the opposite. Explain why. But I think there are other general plan policies about how to.
There are, yeah, there are others. To make a motion that would need to do this, right, is this like a group effort here? Let's try and restore speed order here. Commissioner Bigford?
My specific objection here is around the setbacks and around a, a seemingly very large in scope ability to go up by twenty more feet and to encroach on that setbacks space. That is my specific objection. And that is what I would like to address in the reason that I said no to, to this. It is, it is too broad in its focus. I like the project, I think you should build a hotel there. I don't necessarily think it should have the ability to sweepingly change setbacks for everything in, in that geographic area, and I don't think everything should be able to go up twenty more feet. I think his project should be evaluated on its merits. I think that the citizenry have every right and obligation to say that there's something they don't like, and that potentially in that process, we can fix it. But this is not in keeping with the urban village documentation that was agreed to. I heard that from everybody earlier. And we're suggesting that a sweeping change is an okay thing for us to support and recommend. I cannot support or recommend that. That's.
Oh, sorry, I didn't mean to.
Well, that's.
Okay, so I think there is interest from the commission in deliberating further how we're going to do this, so give my attention if you want to get on speakerboard. Commissioner Young?
Yeah, I'd just like to, like to throw out an idea with full respect to your motion, Commissioner Garcia. We have a staff recommendation, we've already taken a vote not to approve that. Doesn't that achieve the goal of what you all are looking for, which is you're not in support of what the staff's recommending? I, I don't think it's our job to, it just doesn't feel right to me to have to take a vote on no and then say, well, I don't think that's our job. I think our job is to say yes or no, what the staff recommended, and the consensus here is not to approve it.
But, but with due respect.
Let's try to keep a.
Thank you.
And Kentrell, you got to stay clear.
I, I think the answer to this is we said no, and then we send a clear message to council, just add a message to council why we said no. We don't need to vote again to say no to something we already said no to. We can just clarify with a statement that we believe that setback changes and height changes are not the duty of the planning commission, or the duty of the city council, so they choose, if they choose to do that. So I'll point a, point of order on that, I don't think that's appropriate, because this body votes as a whole, and we voted as a whole not to support it, got it? But to add other reasons of why we voted no, I don't, I mean, I'll turn to the attorney, but I don't think that's appropriate. I think what, what would be appropriate is, as the majority does not support the staff recommendation, that'll, that'll go to the council?
Yeah, I mean.
So we, we draft a, a planning commission to city council memo, and we, we write notes like Commissioner Kentrell expresses. All right, Commissioner Bisper is not supportive because of this and that, so there'll be that language in the memo.
Actually always make.
I'm just making it clear that we will, we will capture these comments, and that's what the council will be, like, they'll, they'll ask those questions too.
Thank you, because that's not what I heard earlier. What I heard you say earlier was, if we choose not to say no and provide reasons, that we basically, this voice isn't heard. That's what I heard earlier.
Be clear, what I was saying earlier is that there's a staff recommendation, there's a planning commission recommendation. There is also, you know, more detailed report that we're alluding to, but I was saying for our planning commission recommendation, one of the things we could do is just not make a recommendation. And go ahead, Michael.
Well, I mean, I'm just trying to help you guys get to a vote. We want a vote on Commissioner Garcia's motion. There is a goal that says ensure that, uh, goal, in the general plan, it says ensure that village development starts to scale life, right, as you see residential neighborhood in the village. You could say we don't think it's consistent with that, and that would be our finding, and then you guys can vote.
Let's get back to, all right, folks. So yes, to address the question, to make any decision, drink any recommendations, we would need six votes. Commissioner Garcia, I have you next.
So, thank you for clarifying that. I, I was just, I wanted to move forward with the motion, because I don't want it to give, give the impression that we couldn't come to some agreement, or we took no action, as was previously indicated. Because we are taking action, and our action is that we don't feel that this would conform.
For Commissioner Kentrell?
So my understanding is that when we have a statement to city council, if five of us agree to that statement.
In this case, because it's, it's the general plan, it's a majority of the membership of the body, not a majority of those present. Because if it, if it was a majority of those present, the previous motion would have passed.
That was the only note I wanted to make, we keep saying that we haven't come to consensus, we don't have a majority, we did have a majority, just not a majority of the actual body.
We didn't need the threshold to make a decision, because again, that's a city policy, right? Sure, but that's, I mean, and, and just, that is the part of how this works. We are a body of individuals trying to come to a single decision, and to do that, we have an established threshold for how many of us are agreeing on something. Also, sorry, Kentie, okay, sorry. So, okay.
Individually, are we allowed, because we're allowed to make the same statement that you plan to include. And we would hope that that statement, if I make that statement, that the lack you to include for me, that it be verbatim, or at least close to it, because I, I've seen them and they don't.
They're, they're usually not verbatim, you know, we're trying to summarize, and these are recorded.
I also want to remind you, we are still members of the public. When this goes to city council, like, I'm just saying, if we can't make a decision tonight, or if you don't agree with the decision we made tonight, you're welcome as a member of the public to give public comments, write letters to the council. I've done that on multiple occasions when I didn't like the decision we came to as a mission. That's something you can do in your personal capacity, of course.
Yes. All right, got it. Okay, I, I guess I get all of that. I would like, I think we should try to be clear as a body, why we.
Yeah, I, I agree, I think we should try to come to a decision, make a recommendation, but we can't.
So. So, that's why, I mean, my motion would be to, to, uh, to not adopt the, the resolution to amend the, the, uh, urban village plan because it's not consistent with goal UD nine.
Is that second, is that legal sufficient?
Sure.
Okay, well, actually, so that would be a friendly amendment. Barocchio, do you agree to that friendly amendment? Okay. Is there any further discussion before we hold a vote on that motion? Okay, so the motion that we're voting on is to recommend denial of the general plan text amendment. Because you don't find, I'm sorry, can you, you phrase that again?
Inconsistent with goal UD nine.
Do you want me to read that goal?
Yeah, please.
Sure. I wrote, ensure that village development respects the scale, light, and privacy of existing residential neighborhoods in and near the village.
Okay. Thank you. All right, so we will go to a roll call vote on that. Vice Chair on Elliswise?
Yeah.
Commissioner Barocchio?
Yes.
Commissioner Bigford?
Yes.
Commissioner Cantrell?
Yes.
Commissioner Casey's not present. Commissioner Garcia?
Yes.
Commissioner Oliverio?
No.
Commissioner Rosario is not present. Commissioner Tordeos?
No.
Commissioner Young?
No.
And myself, no. That is four no, or sorry, four yes, five no, two absences, so that motion does not pass either. So we have, we can either conclude this and not make a recommendation or if folks want to change their mind and reconsider one of the previous things we tried to do.
I want to say something.
Sure, go ahead.
You know, when you talk about setbacks and height, that's more of a zoning, and that's project specific. But when you're talking about general, we're doing a general plan text amendment here. This is the vision of San Jose. This is where the future, what you want to see in a twenty year forecast, something that's gonna outlive us. What do you want to see here, right? And when I think of areas along Winchester Boulevard, I think of vibrant energy. I think of like, a lot of, of, you know, people and transactions. So, and I, and I know with the state right now, they've helped deregulate a lot of things, right? Making it much easier for someone to build maybe like housing, right? That doesn't, that wouldn't require a general plan text amendment. So someone could come in and build a hundred percent affordable housing like this scale, correct? Okay, so it's like, okay, hotel or healthy, what do you, what do you? You know, I think of the general plan vision that the city forecast. For me, this would be something I would want to see there. That's all I can say.
Commissioner Oliverio, I have the next one.
Yeah, I need to make a motion to close the general plan hearing.
Motion, uh, Commissioner Oliverio, to close the general plan hearing. Second, from Commissioner Young, would you like to allow any discussion out there, so Commissioner Cantrell?
I, I think we could have, after the statement, city council, thinking that this is, because we were not avoiding the issue, passing the issue to them to make a decision. Should actually be. I, I think we could have come to that. I regret that we didn't, I understand, because there's lots of passion in the room. But this isn't about, that there's no, we're not trying to say that there shouldn't be planning, there shouldn't be a vision. I, I, I love the vision and picture that you had there. But that planning process belongs to these folks, to the city council. This should not be the vehicle to conduct that specific business.
So we have, I don't see anybody else trying to speak. So we have a motion from Commissioner Oliverio to close the general plan public hearing.
I think Commissioner Barocchio.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, just one. So we all were in this room for the last couple of hours, so we all understand the, what we want council to hear, right? We want council to hear exactly that, right? That, that there's different viewpoints, we discussed it very thoroughly. However, we weren't able to put a recommendation. In the way that the notes are given, the piles of paper they have, what, how will the typical council members see that? Will they see it as, oh, okay, they didn't have anything. I guess they didn't really talk about it, right? Where we actually did, um, how's it gonna get presented, one? And then two, with people's understanding of how council members go through their packets, how will we be seen?
So, so I'll leave it to staff to answer that. I just want to say, again, you are also, you, you yourself can give a comment, write letters, but, um, yeah, let's go through like.
So we would, we would note that there were two motions made, that the, the motions failed. There's a third motion right now on the table. We list who voted, how. And then I would say that I think if a council member opens a packet and sees six, five, or zero, I don't know, no vote, they're gonna like look through it and say, well, what's going on? Because typically we have majority support. I mean, that's just, you know.
Sure.
I think.
And then we summarize the discussion.
Yeah.
Do it, it's not meeting minutes verbatim, but it summarizes the council. And all these folks, we do there at the council meeting, and they will have to say this. Thank you, thank council. No further questions, thank you.
Okay. All right, and I just, I saw a couple of hands go up from members of the public during this, unfortunately, we can't accept further comment this time. So, okay. We have a motion from Commissioner Oliverio to close the general, general plan public hearing. That will also have the effect of, we'll be on from this item without making, making a recommendation. No other hands, so we'll go to a vote. Vice Chair on Elliswise? Commissioner Barocchio?
Yes.
Commissioner Bigford?
Yes.
Commissioner Cantrell? Commissioner Casey is not present. Commissioner Garcia?
No.
Commissioner Oliverio?
Yes.
Commissioner Rosario is not present. Commissioner Tordeos?
Yes.
Commissioner Young?
Yes.
And myself, yes. So that is, like, if I count right there, is that?
Eighty-one.
Eight yes and one no, and two absences. So we have closed the general plan public hearing. We'll go through the final items on the agenda. We have any referrals from city council boards, missions, or other agencies? Michael? Okay. Uh, we're going to the welfare, we have a report from city council.
Um, we do have to, from memory, because my laptop. So, um, let's see that, the, uh, capital are real, the plans by council, about even two sessions ago. And on Wednesday, there was a series of zoning amendments, the general plan amendments that went to council related to the housing element. What was it, uh? Affordable housing, ADUs, uh, 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 overlays on reused, recycled affordable housing sites for previous housing elements. Then there was also the eliminating, um, commercial requirements for affordable housing in the city. But they've already been done by council, those were all approved.
Or San Jose overlays.
What?
North San Jose.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Uh, on the affordable overlay, there was a motion that was approved. A lot of debate about this from council member, um, Peter Ortiz to, um, direct staff to instill encourage affordable housing to include commercial. Where they ended up is that staff should encourage the affordable housing developers to explore if feasible to include commercial. Um, I think there's a lot of reluctance to do that, but, um, there's also a lot of people that are really concerned in Ortiz's particular values. There's small businesses, there are often people of color in lower income communities that are getting picked out for a while in developments. And so that, that passed. And then the other one that passed was, um, the North San Jose, um, overlays. But you guys heard those, worked with the council as well.
Thank you, Michael. If I could just ask a clarification, um, I know you're speaking from memory, but you said the capital urban village plan is approved.
Correct.
Um, I know our recommendation had.
Oh, that's right.
How did that incorporate?
Yeah, so they did, I'm sorry, I should have remembered that. Um, the council did, uh, bump up the highest density by ten percent. So, sorry, I forgot.
As you gave me.
Four and one. Before you begin, no.
Yeah. Okay. Anything for subcommittee formation, or sorry, any other questions with council?
Can I just, um, Michael, a brief question. And I know this wasn't a council issue, have we resubmitted our housing?
Oh, yeah. Am I allowed to talk about that? We did, we submitted, um, what's that?
About the twenty-nine?
Yeah, is that?
Wednesday.
Wednesday last, last week. Yeah.
Okay, great, thank you.
Uh, anything for subcommittee formation reports announcing business?
Yeah.
Anything for commission calendar and study sessions? I never actually had a public record. Okay, I don't think we've ever had any. All right, if you're a journey tonight's meeting at nine oh five PM, thank you, everyone.
What's, what's public comment?